We're here. Jeff and Lee Gustafson in the office with you, Julie. Lee's online and Heather's online and I'm online. Well, I guess I'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our January 20th, 2021 Water Sewer Commissioners Meeting. On an entertaining motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
That was the motion and Lee Gustafson is the second. Any changes, corrections, additions to those minutes?
I have none.
I have none.
All those in favor of approving those minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, and the next one would be to approve our minutes from our January 20th Special Select Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I didn't catch you, Lee, though.
Lee Gustafson.
Lee?
Correct.
I hear your voice coming in from the background, but I don't see it, so it's hard to put your voice with your face.
Sorry.
Lee Gustafson's motion and Lee Dayton was the second. Any changes, corrections, additions, or anything on those minutes?
I have none.
All those in favor of approving those minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the last thing would be our January 25th Special Select Board Meeting minutes. An entertaining motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
I see you now. So Lee's the motion, who's second?
I did. Heather.
Heather's the second. Any changes, corrections, clarifications, additions, or anything with those minutes?
I have none.
None.
All those in favor of approving those minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Take care of that paperwork. Those minutes will go away by now. Uh, the next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there's someone that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? And Julie, do we have any answers from previous meetings? Or anybody replying, letters, or anything?
The only thing that I did get that I forwarded to you guys, I think, yesterday was the letter from Felissa Sutherland on the cannabis ruling. That would be the only thing that would be response from the last meeting.
Oh, that informational thing that she sent, I think.
Correct.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Here we go, other citizens' comments or answers from, for, from the previous meetings will go on to old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. Maybe, all right. So the Public Safety Building, we had a meeting last week. They're determining the building to be about 60% complete at this time. Walls are being roughed in. At that time, they thought the apparatus bay floor was going to be poured this week. That spend delayed a little bit, so they'll be pouring that, they hope, by the end of the month. But walls are being roughed in. The sheetrock is going up in several areas. The building committee is going to be doing a walkthrough, actually, this Friday, to look, now that walls are framed in, to look and make sure that everything is where they want it to be.
Julie, what time is that walkthrough on Friday?
It's going to be at 10:00.
Do you want select board members to be there?
That, that's up to you. If there's going to be several of you coming, then I need to know because I'll, I'll need to know. Number one for parking and number two, I'll need to notice it. So if there are board members that are willing to, Lee, you're part of the building committee, so if there's other board members that want to come, just let me know. And you need to have a hard hat. You can just let me know tomorrow if you want, if you want. And I can make plans. Speeding on Andover Road, the police chief did let me know, while we don't have signage out because of the weather and the old sign, they have been out there running radar, sitting, parking, trying to increase attendance out in that area. The gravel project, we have heard from the local Act 250 Commission, they're currently reviewing the application on merits, hoping that we'll have a decision on that relatively soon. Stephanie did not offer an ETA on that permit, but said that they were reviewing and was hoping to have something soon, whatever, so. The Police Advisory Committee, I was asked to serve on the local police advisory committee for VLCT. We had our first with nine other town managers and police chiefs. It's a mixture throughout the state. We actually had our first meeting this morning. We will be meeting quarterly. It was a really, I, at first, I was kind of like, ugh, another committee, but I'm really glad that I had said yes and that I would participate in that. It was very informative. It deals also a lot with our workers' comp stuff as well. It ties into that. So there's a lot of things out there available to us that I never knew about. And a lot of things that this committee will be involved with as far as reviewing legislation and, and things that are being discussed on this topic in the state. So it's definitely a good thing to be a part of and get affiliated with, so. While I, my focus has been taking things off my list, I added about seven more today, so that's okay.
Can I just interrupt you?
Yes.
Sorry about Henry. Thank you, Julie, for doing that. I think it's a wonderful thing. And I really appreciate your efforts, even though you have tons to do. I think it's a really great thing that you're willing to learn more and I think you'll teach us a whole lot, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So Julie, when you, when you're going to be doing that, those meetings with that committee and stuff, will you be working on our end of it as far as the town goes at the same time?
What I'm proposing for the town, I, I will have before that. This is, this is more of a long-term, as the legisla-, as the legislature is reviewing this, I forget the act, I think it was Act 166 that was initially put in. There's, you know, the police chiefs are off working on, you know, some reform to that bill. That bill, as it goes through, is being met with a lot of resistance from police chiefs and from the league itself. There's some things in there that haven't necessarily been thought through completely as far as the implementation of it. There's some actual life safety issues with regard to that bill, not only for police officers, but also for citizens. So there's a lot of reform of that that's taking place, but what we are looking to do as far as, you know, a committee that could advise our police department, that's something a little bit different. What this committee is working with is more about the reform of policies and procedures that police departments have to follow. Yeah, you're welcome. So that's that. And then the fund balance, reserve fund policy, Ron and I finally were able to have a very lengthy conversation, which spiraled into, again, an area where there is way more that we can do with this that I had no idea even existed. So the more Ron and I got talking, the more, as a reserve fund policy may not be exactly the way we want to go, we may want to look more at a true capital reserve fund. We don't, our capital plan is not a capital reserve fund by statute. And the capital reserve fund gives us a lot more opportunity, a lot more flexibility. It ties in directly with the asset management plan that I've talked about wanting to do. It will change a little bit of the way we do business for the better, you know? It's, it's better, better planning tool. So Ron and I are going to meet when they come down on March 10th, they'll be coming down to do our audit. And him and I have set a couple hours aside on that day to talk through what a capital reserve fund really looks like and how we implement that. It is a vote that will be needed by, by the voters, voters have to approve it. But, so him and I need some time to kind of work through what that looks like for Chester. So instead of having you adopt a fund balance policy now, the fund balance policy feeds the capital reserve fund policy. So instead of doing that now, if we could just take a couple months, take a step back so that we do it right the first time, that'll give me a little more opportunity to get my head out of the clouds and understand a little bit more about what our options are, because there's several of them.
So it seems like because there's these other options that we have and these other directions that we can go in, and some of them might be more conducive to help us in where we want to be with all these different funds. You're going to do a little more research, you're going to talk to Ron, you're going to get us some more options and get some more details on how all that works, and then we can go forward with deciding on what direction and how exactly we want to go with these funds?
That would be, that's what I'm asking, that would be my advice. Instead of rushing through something now that we may potentially change in three months, if we could just hold off for three months, that would be good.
Sure, sure. That makes sense, Julie. Appreciate all the work you do for that because, I mean, we've been working on this for a while, for a year or so since we first got the approval for it, but I'd rather take the time and do it right than have to do it again and make a, make an action that we're going to regret or have to change in the future. So just a little extra time's not going to change anything as far as where we are now anyways, so I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
I have a question, quick question. Julie, the $20,000 that we had in the budget that was going to go to this fund, it will still go to this fund no matter, even though we don't have the right name or the policy quite right yet, is that correct?
Do is just, we'll leave it in the budget, but we won't make the transfer until the fund, until whatever fund we choose, whatever mechanism we choose is actually set up.
Okay, that makes me happy, thank you.
You're welcome. And then I think that's it. My other note Amy's going to mention in the, her elections update, so that's it for old business.
Do any board members have any old business? All right, here we go, we'll go on to election update, and Amy O'Brien is going to give us a little update on how things are going to work this election year and town meeting and the voting process. Amy?
Can you hear me? Arnie?
I can't find you, Amy, where are you?
She's sitting, she's sitting in your spot, she's sitting in your old spot.
Can you guys hear me?
Just above, yep, okay.
Anyway.
Okay, so we mailed out a postcard to all registered voters. Most people have probably received them by now. On the card, it states how town meeting is going to be run this year, that it's informational only. The Zoom link is on the card with the meeting ID, and we're doing a passcode with this meeting to make it easier, so we don't have to let people in to the meeting. So just a note there that there is a passcode for this meeting. The other thing is the ballots will be ready by February 10th. Town reports will be ready by February 12th. People can pick up ballots at the town office, they can only pick up their own. They can request other family members if they'd like to, but we have to mail those. So the informational meeting is Monday, March 1st at 6:00 PM, and everything will be voted by Australian ballot on Tuesday, March 2nd, here at the town hall from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And we have put some information out on Facebook for how to register to vote. There is same-day voter registration. If you haven't registered, you can come do it on the day of the election. And I think that that is pretty much it. We have the Zoom link on the website as well for town meeting.
Do, does anybody have any questions for Amy?
I have a question. Amy, is there a possibility for people to do absentee ballot?
Yes, there is, yep. We've had people calling already to request absentee ballots, so you can call, you can email me or Debbie, or you can stop into the town office to request one. We should have the ballots and everything all set by February 10th, so we'll be mailing them out after that.
Thank you.
So I have a question about logistics, and how are we presenting the information for each warrant article, or who's going to be doing that, and how is that going to be managed via Zoom? Who, is, is the moderator meeting, or is it going to be like a typical town meeting, where we have moderator, et cetera?
We have to have the moderator, yeah. So we're going to have to iron out the details of exactly how this is going to flow. What I plan on doing is having a PowerPoint presentation, because then it can be shared, I can share my screen on Zoom and we can review it that way. What's going to get a little bit tricky is if people want to comment or ask questions, so we're going to have to just kind of write out what the rules are going to be. You know, you're going to have to use your little hand button on your computer to raise your hand so that Amy can see you're there, and, and so we just got to work through the logistics. We'll get with Bill, you know, about how that whole piece is, is going to play. We're going to have to be patient, because it's going to take a little bit longer. Each one of those articles, he's going to have to read through. We don't have to vote, but we have to read on, we have, he has to read it and then we have to discuss it, is my understanding. But Bill may have a better, more efficient way to do it, so we'll be talking with him.
I just want to clarify something or make sure it's clear. The absentee ballots that people are requesting, they have to be here by and be, to be counted by 7:00 PM that evening, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so there shouldn't be any question, people bringing them in later or whatever?
No, and I believe the forms for the absentee ballot say it has to be here by 7:00 PM on Election Day, I think.
I don't know, I can check that.
Yeah.
I'll check and see if it says that.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it's always been. That's Vermont law, actually.
Yeah, we've never really had an issue with people returning their ballots, but.
Late, yeah.
And are we planning on having people making presentations about their particular warrant? I'm thinking of the ones at the end that are asking for funds for senior solutions or whatever. Is that going to be when we're going to get the information about that?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, they can certainly put information on the town website if they choose, and their information is in the town report. The town report will be up on the town website. You know, and as we go through those articles, my thought is, as we go through those articles, Bill reads the article and that person can then come up and speak like they would normally here, and then questions if, if there are any. So I, I see it running very much like it does here. It's just that we won't be voting here.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Julie?
Yep.
Only Zoom, correct?
Only Zoom. I will probably physically be here because we have the screen and it's just going to be easier, but there will not be people here. I'm not going to try to do a mixed bag, it gets too confusing.
So does that?
Julie, is there any limitation? I imagine if we have a good turnout, like, you know, we do at town meeting, is there any limitations on Zoom on how many participants can be involved at, on one meeting? I mean, you start filling a screen up with 80 to 100 people or something, it might get kind of hard to keep track of everything.
There is a limit set right now, I think, at 100, but there is an add-on that we can put on this, on Zoom to make it 500, which is $50 a month, but we can do it just for the one month.
Right, which we will do, we will do, because we could get more than, we get 100 people sitting here, we may get more than 100 now that it's via Zoom. And it will be, so people are going to need to be patient, because it's going to be, it's going to be hard to kind of watch who's got their hand up and, so there's going to just need to be some patience, and we'll talk about that.
And unmuting people, and that might be a challenge.
Yeah, the moderator's job is going to be a little different, a little different this year, and adding this to it is going to make it a lot more, a lot, a lot more of a challenge, for sure.
Yep, it is.
You end up with over 100 people or something like that on a Zoom meeting, and I get lost with 10 or 12 here sometimes. There might be more than that.
Yep, yep.
Hopefully this will be the last time that has to happen. Having in-person meetings, especially for a town meeting, are so important, when you could do it face-to-face with your, with your fellow citizens and stuff. That's a huge part of the way Chester is and stuff, but we have to make do with what's going on now, so we'll stick it out and see what happens.
Yep, okay.
Anything else on the election update, any other questions or anything?
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Next item is the Chester Community Greenhouse, and we put together, Julie, you put together a great letter, and it's in your packet for all the select board members and stuff, and at this point, I would, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback in town regarding this project from the people that have heard about it and stuff. And it, it seems like it's, everything, I have, I have not heard one negative thing about it, and I've talked to quite a few people about it, so it's, it's really a positive thing for the community, and I'm really looking forward to how this is going, working. So we have this letter of support, and you all have it in your package and stuff, and you've had a chance to read it over, and is everybody okay with this? Anybody want any additions or changes to it, or are they all right with the way you read it and what it says?
I think it's great, and thank you, Julie, and I'm absolutely fine with making a motion, Arnie, for you to sign it for all of us. However, I think it was, I felt it was a unanimous vote of confidence last time we discussed it.
It was.
And so I'm wondering, would it be more significant to have each member or to put in a, each member sign it, or to put in a sentence that it was a unanimous, that the board was unanimous in their support? That's the only thing that, and, and that is really a question for the greenhouse people with that, is that necessary?
I think that's a good idea, Heather, the fact that it was unanimous and have all our signatures on there. I mean, we all agree on it, so I think it, I think that would help. And I don't see, I think that's a great idea.
To me, your signature is just as important as everybody's, but I don't know about, you know, when you're going for grants, if that would be significant. That's my only suggestion.
I, it can hurt, that's for sure, and I think, you know, having all our signatures on there would definitely help, so.
I'm happy to have just Arnie sign it.
Any other questions, comments regarding the letter?
They didn't.
I'm happy to have just Arnie sign it.
You're already there, you can sign it real easy.
No, I have to redo it.
Well, it would have to be revised, et cetera. I, it just, while I support the project, I still am interested in seeing all the details on it, so while I appreciate what Heather said, and I don't disagree with what the letter says, I think that the way it's written, as Julie presented it to us, is fine with me.
All right.
I agree.
So Heather, will you make the motion to authorize me to sign it as-is and go from there?
Unless the board that's asked us to write this thinks that we should do that, that's, you know, is there any, does it matter?
Kind of our decision, but Robert or anybody on the Chester Community Greenhouses, if you have any opinion on this, does it make much difference?
Well, I, I think in this case, we obviously defer to the select board. We greatly appreciate the support as-is. Support's been overwhelming, as you mentioned, from the community, but having the select board agree to this letter, I think, is sufficient, and we do really appreciate it. It'll help us pursue grants, it'll help us maintain our momentum going forward, and hopefully get the project done in a reasonable amount of time, so.
Then, Arnie, I'd like to make a motion for you to sign the letter of support for the Chester Community Greenhouse on the board's behalf.
Second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Lee Gustafson is the second, and any further discussion on it? All those in favor of the motion as stated, would you as the signer, please say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Great. This is going to help your committee and your folks in your path to the greenhouse, and hopefully spring will be coming soon enough and the snow will kind of come down a little bit, and it'll get us in the mood for more greenhouses and growing things. That's definitely coming up soon, I hope. Next item on our agenda is just some housekeeping, our certificate of highway miles. We go through this every year, and it's just a statement to the state to clarify how many miles of Class 1, 2, 3 and state highways we have, and it doesn't look like it's any different from last year, Julie, nothing's really changed, you haven't added anything or taken away anything?
What this actually, Arnie, you guys signed this at your last meeting. We said, or two meetings ago, actually, we submitted it to the state. They came back, this was, a couple things were their error. Back quite some time ago, several years ago, we discontinued Level Road, they never subtracted it from the mileage, it's .14 miles, and they also, when they did some repaving on 103, the approach on route, from Route 10 onto 103 increased slightly by .07 miles. So they have asked us if we would revise this in light of those couple of changes from a few years ago.
Where is Level Road, Julie?
Off of Richardson Road, which is off of Route 11 toward, going towards Lunandary.
Okay, all right.
Out on the town line there, yep.
A little stretch over there, yep. So we need a motion to approve these, the certificate of highway miles for a year ending February 10th, 2021, as it is written here.
So moved.
Second.
So that was Lee for the motion?
Yep.
And who is the second?
Jeff.
Jeff.
Jeff, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All set with that. And the next thing is our tax map maintenance proposal. And this is another item, Julie, that we have every year?
Yep, this is housekeeping, yep.
So basically, we're just approving our tax maintenance proposal for the town of Chester for, for processing data recorded 4-1-2021 through 3-31-2022. So an entertaining motion to accept this town maintenance contract?
So I'll make a motion.
I'm going to accept the maintenance town contract.
Lee's the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Lee Gustafson is the second, any questions or concerns?
Yes.
Julie, this is pretty much straightforward, this is what we go through every year, it seems, with this company.
So I have a question, is this the same rough price that they've given us last year? Has it gone up or down, or?
No, they, they hold their pricing pretty well, when they do municipalities, yeah. It's, it's, they're typically the cheapest around, so municipalities, I'll stay with them.
Right, and I'm assuming the $15 fee per building is something that we collect for permits, though?
It's included in the permit fees, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor of approving this town tax maintenance contract for the period 4-1-2021 to 3-31-2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And that takes care of the housekeeping and new business and future agenda items. You have a little list on here, Julie, I lost it already.
Your next meeting, start your interviews for the Positions of Planning Commission and Development Review Board. I'm anticipating that you'll probably need the March, the February 17th and the March 3rd meeting to conduct those. You also will have a presentation. You also will have a presentation from a group of young people in our town who are looking to do some work to the skate park and some fundraising that they'd like to do on behalf of that, so they will be here to make a presentation. That, that's your next meeting. Then, there's some anticipated stuff in March, you know, more of your housekeeping. People's Bank will be here on March 17th to, you know, do the year review of the Economic Development Fund. And then we'll have the police advisory policy will be on one of these meetings coming up as well.
And our, I know we didn't, we didn't make it for this town meeting regarding the cannabis regulations that are coming, coming around with the state and stuff. The reason we postponed it was because we didn't have enough time for an in-depth discussion with the public and having all the information and stuff, and we're starting to gather the information, not for next meeting, but in the future, just to make sure we keep that on the radar once we gather some more information and figure out how things are going, and keep that in our, keep that on our future agenda items, too.
It is, I was just going to wait and see a little bit more about what the legislature, what the legislature does in these next coming weeks, because that'll certainly make a difference as to what you choose to do.
And, Arnie, my understanding is that these local retailers wouldn't be able to open until December, or, sorry, October of 2022, is that correct?
I believe so, I think it is, it is 2022, and there is a board right now, I think, that they formed, they're going to be going over some of the details on how that works.
Well, so, I just want to say, our decision, our, the board's decision to wait a little bu, while and have some public hearing, although I received a couple of messages that that may not have been what everyone wanted, I think that that, I just want to say, is a good idea to get more information and to have more time, and we do have time. So, I just feel like, you know, we, it, it's a smart decision to take the time.
Sure. I'd also like to say, you know, I spoke to our representative, Tom Bach, in town recently, and Governor Scott had, has convened a commission to review and put forth, based on this bill, recommendations, what the implications, any, any of the process that we would want to know as the public. And that commission has been slow to get going, for many reasons, I'm sure, but they are, it, they are convened, and they are starting to get busy on studying this stuff. So, I, I agree with Heather and others that it would be important to have as much information as we have, that we can have, before we move forward, and I think opening it up, I'm looking forward to a robust, robust discussion when we do bring it forward, so, so that is what I know, and I just wanted to share it.
That's good to know, Lee, because as of about 10 days ago, the commission hadn't been formed yet, he was just starting to make those appointments, so that's good to know.
It has been formed, it's just they haven't really gotten their full feet on the ground and running with it, so it will take some time.
Yep.
Extra that information, Lee. Anything else for new business or future agenda items?
So, I have a question, we're going to be interviewing candidates for the Planning Commission and the DRB, and I'm wondering, is there any opportunity for us to, I don't know if a report is the right word, but just have some interaction with a representative of each of those groups before we make these appointments, just to hear how things are going, because I don't really feel like I have a, a good understanding of how those groups are going and what the, the next steps are for them.
You want to hear from the chairs?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, we did have a request from the Planning Commission to get an update on their work so far on the changes of what, what, what they've been working on and stuff, so I haven't heard anything back yet as far as that comes.
They're working on that, Arnie, I reached out to Peter the next day, so they're working on compiling a report for you.
So, Lee, are you requesting maybe to have a meeting, a joint meeting with, with one of, with the boards in general before this happens, or what exactly are you, are you looking for?
Well, similar to how we have representatives of each of the departments in town come and give us an update on what they're doing, just something along those lines, you know, whoever the chair is of the Planning Commission, whoever the chair of the DRB is, just come and just give us a five-minute information update on where they are, what they're doing, what the plans are for the next year or two.
So, maybe we can put that on our next agenda item, get ahold of the chairman of both those committees, and have a discussion before we have the interviews and stuff.
Perfect.
I'll add it to the agenda, yep.
All right, Julie.
That would be great.
Thanks for that, Lee, it was a good idea. Any other future agenda items or new business? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Lee's the motion, has his second, all those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Be safe.
Bye.